Call the meeting to order at seven, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Attorney changes or additions to the agenda?
I have none.
All in favor? Consent agenda.
All right, you have the minutes from October fourteenth and the payables and the budget report for you. Don't really have anything significant in the payables tonight unless Sarah Jo, if you can.
On the minutes, Steve and Mike weren't here last meeting. Vanderwell was, but he wasn't, and neither was Mike Fanta.
So Mark was here.
Just thought I'd point that out.
Yeah, no, that's good, thank you.
All in favor? Call us Communications, little letter in front of us.
Yeah, but don't talk out loud about it.
Right. What's that? No, oh yeah, I did. Public forum? Counsel report.
Advisory Board meets Wednesday.
Yep, started today.
Park Road is blocked. With that being shut down, we can't receive some of the funds we have set aside for projects. We were running into problems. We have that water issue repaired that we're doing and the contractor wouldn't begin. They had stripped it all down and it's dry and ready to be put back together. They wouldn't begin until they received the payment. And we couldn't get our money from them. We have found we had enough in the savings account someplace that they would begin to work that way. We have also received some of our insurance money for this project, so that helps. Unfortunately, that came with a notice from the insurance company that they'll no longer cover us because of the size of this plant. So we need to find an insurance company shortly.
Who was it?
Rita is working on that.
Who was the insurance company?
Who was it? I don't know, depending.
Well, obviously we would push Rita into looking local if it's possible.
Yeah, she talked me into doing it.
Park Board met about an hour ago. Some stuff we talked about will be talking about later in the meeting. We did get to see the pictures for the updates of the pavilion at the park. Looks really nice, really clean. He did a great job, I think. I believe Clint said he hadn't turned in any receipts yet, so somehow he figured out how to do it all without balking us. We had a board member give his resignation. Joe, what was his last name?
Roker.
Roker, that's what it was. Joe Roker gave his resignation. He will not be continuing on for another term. We, Paul came in and talked about the farmer's markets. That they're going forward, they're planning on doing every Thursday, rain or shine, starting at five, it's been four thirty. And he was approached by a sponsor to come in and bring porta potties and then clear them off that night. So these, that was everything that we're not talking about later.
There's some good.
We have a porta potty down there that's in conflict of interest with that provider.
They just want more.
Just want more.
For that evening, because there's so many people.
I understand that, but.
I don't see any conflict with that.
Nothing had been confirmed yet. He was just bringing it to the park board to kind of throw off through that we had a sponsor.
I don't think there'd be any.
No, I wouldn't worry about that.
Administrator report?
Yeah. Kind of slipping here, aren't I? Okay, you got the cash balance. Updated last Friday. Just wanted to let you know that we have submitted all the information to Blue Cross Blue Shield for the health insurance. And I imagine, I'm going to talk to Julie here tomorrow, she was busy today when I stopped there. But there is a portal that employees can sign up for. They can help, you know, track their, track their claims and things like that. So that's a good, that's a good little service, I think. And then I just wanted to let you know that at the end of the year, in one of the last pay checks of the year, we always write like a one-page memo to the employees telling them what their health insurance monthly cost will be. And a couple of other things, you know, with the personnel policy. So all the employees will be getting that information probably in the next month, I suppose. Okay? Like Andy mentioned, the golf advisory board meets on Wednesday night and they are going to look at the draft of the golf course budget. I want to thank Jacob. Jacob sat down with me here last week, two weeks ago, and we put a, we put a good budget together. Then the council will look at that on November tenth at our next council meeting. There was one little mistake on the resolution that we approved for Wasika's County, I'm sorry, Wasika Hockey Association. The resolution did not have the address of the Purple Goose, so we put that on the resolution. I put it in your packet here. Andy and I signed that and we sent it off to the state. And then I would suggest that we have the annual performance review of myself at our next council meeting, if you're okay with that. Jason Moran will be present for a couple of items on the agenda that evening, so if that's okay with you guys.
As do while he's here, not something bringing him over twice.
That's going to give me a busy couple of weeks. Well, don't worry, I'll pack my bags before the meeting starts, just in case. And then also, I just mentioned we have three more council meetings for this year. And that's about all I have for the administrative report.
We're planning on going back to one meeting a month after we get the budget straight away.
I don't know, what do you think?
I would assume so.
And then wire back up in August, September for two?
When budget time ends.
Seems to be working pretty well.
Needs to be working pretty well. I mean, you'll see tonight, we're going to be out of here in twenty minutes, so.
Well, it's, I'll get to the third inning then, so.
Maybe Steve will have a nice long report for us, I'm not sure. Motion to approve administrator report. Well, he started talking about something else. All in favor?
Second it, Sarah or Kyle?
Same time.
Steve, what do you got for us tonight?
Standard stuff.
Where's the excitement?
Calls went up from third quarter of last year and it's down from second quarter this year. So I mean, it's kind of the natural flow of stuff. We are, we are up one hundred calls over last year. We're getting kind of a little bit different set of calls. We're getting a lot more frauds and thefts, a lot of mental health stuff. Other than that, I mean, it's, we had three that were assisted or covered by the county on Sundays. There's sometimes a little bit of a gap in coverage there. But other than that, pretty standard.
How many employees are there in your department currently?
Currently, there's eight total, including the SRO.
Including what?
Including the school resource officer. That is four full-time and four part-time.
Do you feel that you have enough time to go out and supervise your staff in the field?
It varies greatly. Sometimes I have enough time, sometimes I spend three-quarters of my day in the office.
That's what I'm bugging him.
So, I mean, it's, it ebbs and flows.
Personally, I like to be out and community more, but if you don't have time for it, it doesn't work.
Right.
But I'm looking at all the paperwork that your department does. And I mentioned this to Clint when he was studying the looks for the city. He has the most expensive employee doing the most meaningless job. And I'm hoping that that's not the case in your department.
I like to get out. I actually enjoy that. I sit at my desk more than I would like to. But a lot of the times, there's administrative functions that I'm the one that has to do them. There's access to certain things that I'm the one that has the access to, so there's no one else that really can do these functions. And to be honest with you, the training side of the profession to begin with, I do those in large quantities because I just don't have the day-to-day time to be able to do one hour at a time. So, you know, when I do get free time, a lot of time it's handled with training functions that everybody else has the ability to do from time to time. I don't get free breaks like that. If I do, I try to get out.
And your sergeant is doing some training also for this?
All of us have to, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Paul.
Get this up here. You want me to turn those off? Good evening, I'm Paul Bogus. I'll try to do this in less than a minute here. All I want to do is give a brief overview of the songs in the park and the farmer's market for 2025. First thing I want to do though is thank the council for the support. Shelley and I had, Shelley's my wife, I don't know how you know, but we had a great time doing it. We just really enjoy it, we've had a lot of fun. So I just appreciate the support, everything that everybody's done. The office staff has done just a great job, even having to make and redo checks and this and that. The other thing about every other time, it seems like, and the people that take care of the park just, I mean, it's always been, whether we've had rain that day or whatever, it's always been cleaned up and mowed and everything. They just do a great job, so I just want to make sure, point them out. We had a couple of things that, for the most part, everything worked really well. Couple of things maybe didn't work out as well as we had planned, but that's kind of part of the deal. I do have some handouts here, I'm just going to hand out where, I know you have one. The front page is just tentative dates for the 2026. I was saying to the park board that Sarah from the office called me, it was Sarah. Called me from the office and asked me for dates for 2026, so I kind of assumed it was a goal. So just a couple of things. Like Kyle said, the farmer's market, the feed, I should say, I should go back. The back three pages are a survey that we did for the vendors for the farmer's market. And the four things that really stood out is everybody would like to start at five o'clock instead of four thirty. That's an easy one. All the vendors preferred that we did it every week, that way they kind of know, and, which I thought was a good thing. And they also preferred we did it rain or shine, so that's the plan for this year. They all have covers and canopies and such, so that shouldn't be a problem, you know, they're kind of on their own on that. They also, they liked the location where it was and it's all kind of covered in there, but it was really an encouraging survey, I thought. And yeah, the other thing was, was that they all thought that it went really well, especially for the first year. So Caitlin Kratz took care of a lot of it. She did all the, all the vendor permits and all that kind of stuff, helped a ton. Has offered to help with more promotion and stuff this year, so we'll get that out. The Janesville night out went really well, considering it was, for me personally, it was a battle. Officer Jewison offered to help and it was a lifesaver because I don't know what I would have done without her taking care of all the stuff. And she's offered to help again for 2026. So that will help a lot. Probably be coming back to the city council at some point before that. There's just some things that I've kind of learned other towns do and Janesville has actually done before, so I just want to kind of run it through people, but I'm not exactly sure what's all happening yet, so. And Kyle, you mentioned, yeah, the porta potty, Erdman, and I don't, is it sanitation? Is that, I'm not sure what they go by, but it's Erdman's, I know that.
Marty Erdman.
Okay, yeah, they have volunteered, and actually they volunteered to bring two if we want them. They will bring them that night and then they may not get them that night, but the next day, yeah, just so that we're, you know, everybody. Yeah, they just volunteered to do that. The only other thing I have was, we've actually had musicians and one food truck contact us about playing here. And I'm thinking, this is strictly a guess, but every musician that comes here that isn't necessarily from Janesville comments on how nice it is. I mean, it's a perfect location, the park is nice, everything's kept out, you know, we draw a decent crowd and everything. So that was kind of encouraging. But yeah, other than that, I don't have anything unless anybody has any questions.
As far as weekly on the farmer's market, it pretty much runs itself, right? Once the vendor's set up, you don't have to make contact with them?
No, no, usually I'll stop by. We'll have signs again. I have two of them that I just carried over from last year, like we had. And then I'll have to get a couple of new ones with the 2026 dates, but I'll put that up. Otherwise, I'll probably stop on my way home, say hi, I'm sure Shelley will go out, we like to go visit with them. See how it's going and that kind of thing, so I'm sure we'll do that, but yeah, it really pretty much handles itself, so.
I know you said you were looking into something, maybe trying to do things. Is there anything council-wise you want to put on our radar that you're thinking of, that you might want to, you're just thinking about over the next couple of months?
Yeah, the only thing, and maybe it is a good time to bring it up because I suppose that would have to do with some of the other. The only thing is, I, I think, I think Janesville council visits before, but there was talk for the Janesville night out, the council had like served hot dogs and hamburgers and something like that. So I was kind of hoping to maybe do that this year. I don't know if they charge for that, I'm not exactly sure how that works.
In years past, I think it was all the former living mayors that did it.
Is that it? Okay, that works. Okay, yeah, yeah, you know, however it works, I'm not real familiar, I just know other towns have done that and I know Janesville, from what I heard, has done that in the past. So I'm thinking maybe that'd be a good chance, people to get out and meet. I mean, I met people that I've never met out there, the county sheriff and just different people. It was nice to get out and meet people and just visit with them and say hi. So I think that would be a good thing. That's really the main thing that I was thinking of was that, so, is that. So it's something to think about, you know, figure out how to do the cost of the hot dogs and burgers, that's kind of up to, or that would be up to the council. So yeah, that was really the only thing. So, but we're hoping Janesville night out, after seeing it this year, there's been a few other things that I've learned that we can possibly just get to come for, you know. It was a neat deal. Like I said, I've met people that I really didn't know, got to see the horses and the policy and all that kind of stuff. It was fun to see, so.
Because we use picnic shelter on rain days for vendors?
If we have to, I don't think we're going to have to. They pretty much all bring, I think there might have been one that didn't at one time, but I think even they, I wouldn't swear by that, but, but just about all of them had their own little canopy thing, just if nothing else keeps us on.
I know the comment was somebody that does papers, they have to sell them that day, otherwise they have to pitch.
And that was kind of the driving force of that is, I tried to, if it's, if we think it's going to rain, I tried to set noon as a time that we're going to say we're just not going to have it. And yeah, we kind of learned that.
That they're raking it up the night before.
Exactly, and we kind of learned that. So, and that was the force behind that. And we'd kind of talked about before saying rain or shine, but then that was the comment that everybody kind of commented on. But yeah, overall, I was pretty happy, I thought the comments were positive and it went really, it went better than expected for the first year. So customers were happy and vendors were happy, so that's what you shoot for, so. No other questions?
Thanks for all you do with this, Paul.
Oh, absolutely, we enjoy it a lot, so thank you. All right, thank you, Paul.
Paid family medical leave.
Yeah, this was in our council packet last meeting. You had suggested that we put it on tonight's agenda for discussion and the vote. Just want to point out a couple of things with this law. The employee has to, has to apply for this with the state, state has to approve it, okay? So it's not, it's not the employer, it's actually the state. There are limits on this. In a twelve-month period, you can take up to twelve weeks of medical leave and twelve weeks of family leave, but there's a limit of twenty. So even though twenty-four is there, the limit is twenty per year. And I also want to point out that you are paid a portion of your wages. You know, you're not, you're not paid one hundred percent of your lost wages. The state has a formula, kind of like different levels, different tiers of how much payment can be. The max is fourteen hundred and twenty-three a week and that'll probably change every year as inflation and everything changes, of course. Employees do have to notify their employer if they are applying for this, so kind of technically speaking, there's no surprise factor then because we will know that the employee's applying for it. And then the last couple of pages of this little part of the agenda is the notice that we will give employees. And I just want to thank Jason Moran, he helped put these items together. Sarah Jo sat through a lot of, a lot of different webinars and things like that. So I think we have a pretty good handle on this.
And we put this back on tonight, Sarah, although, you know, we discussed visiting the accruing versus, we just haven't had time to get a personnel committee meeting in.
Right.
Andy was farming and I went on vacation, but we can do this separate from that. We are still going to have a personnel committee meeting and talk about that, we're not just ignoring it.
And I figured that it would separate.
Yeah. I just want to point out that last page, Sarah, you called this, I think, did. It's a comparison of what sick and sick time is versus what this new paid leave is. So it's kind of a, kind of a nice sheet there to look at. Yeah, once this is approved, it has to go into effect January one, employees need to be notified before then. So if we can, if we can vote on this tonight, we can start getting notifications out for the employees. And I think you would prefer that we get it sooner than later, correct?
We have to have it up to everyone, but first, it's definitely on that second page. So do you want us to make a motion for the forty-four percent for you for the coverage of the employee in the city?
I would, if you're comfortable, I would maybe make a motion to adopt.
The plan and really to, yeah.
Is that what that policy is?
I have a question from when I was reading through this earlier today. Their accumulated sick time, they can continue to earn that, correct, while they're on leave?
Yes, that's on the second page, I think, isn't it?
I thought it was no.
Employees will not however accrue vacation and sick time. While on the paid leave? Okay, I said yes because the city will still contribute to the health insurance, that's what I was thinking, yes on. But employees will not however accrue vacation or sick time while on paid leave, nor will the city fund the employees' PERA while they're on leave.
That was another reason that was brought up the E S S T, that you front load that and then somebody were to take the.
Right.
Time off, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Anyway. So can I make a motion to adopt the?
Seven point two-two?
Yes.
As well as approving the notice to employees?
Yes.
I knew that was your motion.
That's exactly what I wanted to do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have the first reading?
Yes, there's a company named Midco that is coming into the region. They provide internet, television, fiber, and they are kind of, as I understand it, they're in the southern part of Minnesota and they're kind of moving north. We were approached by them a while ago about possibly building infrastructure in Janesville. The very first step would be that we need to have a franchise agreement in our city code with Midco. And we are going to have a public hearing for that, the last meeting of November. But the first meeting in November will be the first reading. So at our meeting here in a couple of weeks, you'll have a copy of that draft of the franchise. Jason Moran and I are, you know, still kind of reading through it. It's pretty much done for the most part. I just wanted you to know that, to put on your radar. I am also, next week, meeting with the gentleman from Midco, kind of like a meet and greet and just kind of talk about how they go through the process of putting in, you know, the infrastructure. So I'll probably know, learn a lot more next week.
Is this a totally new company in Janesville or are they buying out a subscriber who's already here?
No, it's a brand, brand new company.
And they're not connected with what's going on in the southern part of the county, Waldorf?
I believe they are. I think they're down there now or starting to begin.
Yeah. That was a company program, I believe, and I think we're supposed to be working up this way.
Okay. Commissioner D is talking with me on the, a few different times and stuff, so. Yes, that's just kind of FYI for you, I guess.
General fund budget update.
Yeah, I just figured we could take a couple of minutes tonight and go through the general fund budget. As you know, in September, we had a fifteen percent levy increase. Right now, we were able to make some changes with some expenses and revenues. It's actually down to eleven percent right now instead of fifteen. I was able to add a couple like the state aid programs, fire and police aid, things like that because we received the notice about how much we will be receiving next year. I don't think there's a huge difference in the police one, but the fired one did have, did see an increase in that. As far as expenses, when I adjusted all the health insurance line items, we actually found that for the employer, for the city, health insurance premiums will cost less this year than we had with health partners. So we saw some savings with the health insurance. And then as far as auto, property, liability, insurance, those numbers, we, you know, we'll probably find out what they're going to be in the next month or so, I'm guessing, so I'll adjust those numbers too. I think it would be safe to say that with that. I think it would be safe to say that with that, we probably would be looking at like maybe a ten percent increase instead of the fifteen. If everybody's comfortable with that.
I would love to see it under ten. We did have a discussion this week earlier, Clint, and I was wondering if I could task someone into looking into it about possibly raising our building permit fees, franchise fees. I would like to know where we're at versus other communities that are the same size as far as, are our fees the same as, are we already high? Be a way to build our revenue?
Yep. Yeah, we can.
Maybe just check with a couple of other towns and see where they're, where they're at.
Yeah.
And maybe we could add a little revenue that way, which in turn bring our budget down a little bit too.
Sure. The franchise fees right now are, here is five percent. And I think it's been five percent like forever.
Well, I guess I'd like to see where other towns are at, maybe that's something we could adjust and possibly permit fees.
Okay.
That might help reflect the hole left me at too.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on the updated budget?
Yeah, the, why is the, I'm just wondering, is it just standard for electricity under the street department? Three eighty-one, two twenty-seven for street lighting, is that a normal increase? Are they replacing something?
No, we put money in the public works budget every year to pay the electricity bill for the streetlights, so that's what that is. Great. Yep. Good question. A one percent levy increase dollar amount is about fourteen thousand dollars. Does that make sense? So, if you want us to go down two percent, that's twenty-eight, that's basically.
Got to cut twenty-eight or make twenty-eight.
Yep.
Well, like I say, look into those, I'd sure rather make it than cut it, but I still want to be aligned with everyone else.
Sure.
We have any other questions on the updated budget? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Seven thirty-four.